And let us begin. Okay. Welcome to everybody. Call to order, the Board meeting the Garrison University School District for May 27, 2020. And first up is the roll call. Dusty, you want to take it?
Jocelyn Appcello.
Here.
David Gelber. Not here yet. James Hock.
Here.
Jill Lake.
Here.
Courtney McCarthy.
Here.
Matthew Spicer.
Here.
Sarah Tormi.
Here.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. I just wanted to take this moment to offer a moment of silence. We reached a numerical level of sadness of 100,000 deaths in the country, so I thought I'd take just a few seconds to remember the 100,000 people who died from COVID-19. Okay? Thank you very much. Dr. Jackson, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Certainly, James. I feel like you get to pick anyone you do these. Dusty, do you have the flag today or?
While we're waiting for Dusty and the flag, David, could you mute your microphone? That'd be lovely.
If not Dusty, I can start. I'll just start.
You want to forego? Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Next up on the agenda is let's see here. Presidential remarks. I have just a few here. One is that the the board has been busy orienting Carl Albano as our next superintendent. We've been, he's been involved in meetings, both at the committee level and with board members individually and also community members. We Jocelyn Appcello had put together a nice list of Garrison and Phillips Town related community organizations so that we can put people who play a significant role in the community in touch with Carl and vice versa. So I think they wanted to thank Jocelyn for that. The main focus of everyone's minds, I would imagine, right now is it's a few things. One, ending the, ending the school year and beginning the next school year. I think Dr. Jackson will supply us with some updates in that front. And there is a webinar that is going to be featured in, I think, tomorrow, I believe. Is that correct? And where you can get all your information about openings and reopenings. But you know, one way to, one thing to think about is that there are two reopenings happening when we reopen, and that is the physical plant and then the educational reopening. Both of them require different strategies and different ways of thinking. So there will be a call for members of the board, no more than two, I think, but to probably to join the reopening task force, I think we're calling it. And we have a list of folks who are doing it. So and then on a brighter note, in the sense of brightness, meaning the future, more college acceptances and decisions have come in. And I won't read the names of the students, but our students are from 2016 and previous years, students who came through Garrison and are now graduating high school in 2020 are going to Alfred, Castleton, Colorado College, University of Richmond, a series of Sunnies, of course, Binghamton and Albany and Oswego, Rensselaer, Polytech, Centenary, Southern Utah, Buffalo, Indiana, Persinus, Boston College, University of Vermont, Southern Methodist, College of Charleston, Cornell, Skidmore, SUNY Farmingdale, BYU, University of Chicago, City College of New York, Middle Tennessee State University. And I imagine some of you can figure out who might be going there. But that's a wonderful showing for this class. Those are all fine schools and I wish them the best of luck. And you know, I think Garrison plays no small role in the development and the performance and the and where those, those once children, now adults are ending up and beginning their lives. And so I, on behalf of the board, I wish them the best of luck and congratulations. Deborah, superintendent's remarks?
I also will update the, with the webinar and the letter I listed, and there were students who came forth who obviously have even left Garrison, but we wanted on that list and a few that I missed. So I'll update that and get that out tomorrow as well. So you'll all have that. So, thank you. Just a couple of things. Let me just start, you've all, I'm sure, been listening to the governor's briefings. And on Thursday, he, he made that comment that in-person summer school will not be authorized this year. And it still could be provided through distance learning. And I just wanted to be clear because I keep getting the question, are we offering summer school? He's really referring to credit recovery in that. And I do know that our district has offered summer school for a week in August. We have not come forth with, are we doing that at this time? There's, you know, being synchronous for students, staffing is a question we have prior to opening in September. I also want to add that in 2021 and 2022, we wouldn't offer an onsite program due to the building construction as well. So I just, a little update on that. So summer is one of those pieces that I know Carl will keep on top of. And we'll see where we go, but it would be online at this point. The governor has also said, and I'm sure you know this, that it's too early to make decision jet about reopening in the fall. The state will issue some guidelines by July 1 or end of June. And as you know, we will be required to submit reopening plans for approval in July. Hopefully by the end of July is what we're hearing. There's lots of questions about what that will look like and how that will go forward. And Carl will be leading a lot of that, and I'll get to that in a bit, but I want to just sort of start with, that's where we're at. The other question that I heard, and I'll just say now, the question is, are we allowing our students to keep their devices this summer? And the answer is yes. Yes, because we don't know if they're going to be needing them come September. It's highly possible. Certainly with the exception of grade eight who's leaving us and as students are moving out of the district and going out of state and other places, we're asking, we're collecting those as, as they're leaving. So tonight you also will have the budget hearing. I will leave that to, in the wonderful hands of Sue. But right now I just want to say that, you know, we keep hearing that there's going to be funding to offset this reduction in state support through the CARES Act funding. There's been lots of questions on that. And New York does plan on using that money to offset a reduction in state support through the pandemic pandemic adjustment on school runs, school aid runs. We're waiting to hear more on that as well. There's lots of questions from the federal level on where that money goes. Is it going to follow Title I? Is it going to be? Will other places allowed to be part of that, private schools? Where, where is that money going? So I know New York State is looking at that. I think, let me start then back into the reentry. So the State Education Department is attempting to develop guidelines on reentry. And we're really now working off of a lot of assumptions that just keep evolving. And they do keep changing. And tomorrow I'll talk about what some of them are. And even the CDC requirements, as they have come out, continue to change. For example, originally the temperature taking was key. Now they're saying that's not as key. That's not something districts may be doing. It's not one of the recommendations. So there's lots of changes happening. And I would really be remiss in saying that we know what that all looks like. I know our small team has been developing, you know, what if scenarios and those scenarios change every time we get a new bit of direction. So I know that Carl, in leading this work for us, is also hoping that we see New York State come forth with some plans. Many states have, but as you know, New York really is looking at local control. And we're also in the Hudson region, so here may be very different than upstate. But simple questions like if you set up a mock classroom, where are you going to store all additional furniture? If you're doing social distancing? Lots of questions, evolving their academic questions, health, safety questions, technology questions. You know, what will we really need? We have a lot of volunteers. They will be led by Carl and he is, he's really gotten on board quickly. We have three parents, Michael Schottler, Charlotte Rowe, Susan Maitau. And then we actually, we have eight teachers, Debbie Earl, Julie Green, Stacy Ricky, Amy Kachera, Lauren Johnson, Jen Pitts, Seven Fortini and Nancy Romano. Alex Levine will be on that committee representing administration. And Frank Gugliara is, the Bosse's are both Putnam Northern West Street Bosse's. I call him the expert on all things COVID these days. He's really our go-to person and he will be working with us and has been working with us as well in our team. So that team will expand. And I know that three of the board members were interested in being part of that. So I will, I will leave that to all of you to discuss, but we will need that. We also may see that New York State is going to give us a requirement of who needs to be involved. Elected officials, you know, has been discussed and really are elected officials in Garrison, our board members. But I know they'll want us to reach out to other avenues in our community. So as we begin to get that list, we'll do a little bit more outreach. So that's just sort of a quick summary and I will talk a little bit more about that tomorrow. And I will be joined. I was joined one other time by the Putnam County Health Department. This time I'll be joined with Melissa Defonce, who's been amazing in terms of the work she's been doing and keeping on top of all this and developing some processes. Transportation is part of the big question on what happens with all the things we're hearing about buses. I won't delve into that, but I just want to share that one of the things that Garrison will be needing to do is to go out to bid with an RFP for transportation services. And I've been talking to our attorneys and others in terms of how that needs to be structured and what we will be doing for that. So that's something on our plate as well going forward. So that's another question mark. I wanted to share that New York State Education Department approved yesterday our resubmitted COVID-19 school district continuity of education plan process. I don't know where they come up with those mouthful of names. But you may remember they wanted more specificity. And so it needed to be resubmitted. And now the approval is there. So that piece is done. And I just want to share in special ed, the New York, yesterday as well, received a letter. The New York State Education Department edited the state performance plan indicator number 11, which is, you know, regarding the initial valuations timelines. They found that our district is in 100% compliance with this indicator. And again, I just need to say Jen Muller needed to get this data to, to the state department just as we were leaving the building due to COVID. And she met all the timelines for the verification review, supplied all the data they want, needed. And today we received the 100% compliance notes. So, or yesterday. So that was very good. Parents are now, well, I believe the last day of school for students will be June 12. We've met our contractual obligations and our New York State 180-day requirement. On this agenda, on the consent agenda, you'll be asked to adjust that calendar, making June 12 our last day. The last day for our educators will be June 15. I will need to get them out the details of what that day looks like. But the plan is to have individuals come into the building for their personal belongings and items that, and things that they may deem critical if we're not back in session in September. So there'll be a rotating, talking about 15 minutes, people in, out. And our custodians have been working all along, packing up student belongings and parents have been wonderful about picking them up and keeping in touch with Michael Tuardi. So that's, those are those kinds of miscellaneous pieces. The board asked me to talk about the e-learning plan. And the questions that I got on this will, how will September be different? And what have we learned thus far? Again, with the thinking, what if we are not back in the classrooms in September or we're going back out again? And, and the questions of what has been done differently grade by grade with regard to what worked and what did not work. And I think that what I said to the teachers early on, it's like everyone is now a first-year teacher all over again when we started this. Even with the training in terms of Google Meet and all those pieces, until you really do something, that's when you find out what works and doesn't work. So it's really been a journey and I really have to appreciate that the staff were willing to take those. They might not want to call them missteps, but those pieces where, well, that didn't work, I know how to fix that, or one of my colleagues knows how to do that a little bit better. And that really has been a process all along, and I appreciate the efforts that went into that. So as I look at, you know, sometimes we divide our grades differently, but when it comes to e-learning, it made sense to talk about K1. So they've been, you know, they've really grown in terms of focusing their asynchronous lessons on phonemic awareness, reading fluency, putting some fun activities along with other lessons. Some not live, some small groups, one-to-one sessions. And that's really been challenging because parents need to be part of that. And it was challenging for the teachers because remember they were not Google. They were not trained in the Google originally and they picked that right up. So that's an area that we watch grow. And I know that I was able to on Friday, watch one of the fun lessons. And it's just amazing to watch the student independently pick up his book. The student I was with pick up his book and show it off and, and just smile ear to ear, sharing with his teacher. Not everyone is ready to share, but that's a piece that, that we've moved towards. And then second and third, again, you know, small guided reading groups, morning circles, read alouds, done by Zoom, other pieces that the teachers do more independently, some fun things as well. But again, you know, when you're talking K1, 2, 3, you're really talking about parents being intimate partners with us. So we've really, I think, grown with that as well. And I think that we, we have some nice plans that Alex has worked, the staff within continuing to move that forward as we go, go on. Four or five, ELA and social studies, math and science. They're currently, they've moved into doing about a half hour session through Zoom with conferencing and extra help daily. That seems to be going again well. Those students clearly are more independent. Lots of supports there. But again, starting out with, you know, how are we going to structure this? And concerns, once you start getting into the upper grades in terms of just Zoom initially, you may remember was not on the compliance list. And so getting that on and, and working with some of the Google Meet pieces that we need to get better on. Our six, eight learning plan. You know, we started with everyone saying at least from day one, 15 minutes. You know, try, try to work with 15 minutes of live and you see where you need to go. And, and as I said, we all sort of started in different places and that's natural and I would expect that. But the e-learning plan for six through eight, the draft currently has students to receive 30 minutes daily synchronous in their core areas. And that would be each weekday, math, science, social studies and Spanish with asynchronous and Google Classroom assignments in addition and teacher office hours separately from that. In discussing this with the K, with the K, with the six, eight teachers, they see value in being synchronous every other week for 30 minutes. So that's discussions continuing. And I've asked Carl to be involved because this is the model going into September. We, we want to make sure everyone's on board with that and we want to see what will work with the, with the teachers, with the students. There are a few things that teachers have asked, and honestly, this did not, we did not think of these things. It's what happens when you start working. They've asked for synchronous to be mandatory because that would help with the consistency. And I couldn't agree more because, you know, you go into a session that's meant to be mandatory. And what happens is we're not taking attendance in that session and the numbers are really small showing up. So in the upper grades, that makes a lot of sense to ask that to be consistent. But parents along the same lines have asked for our schedules to be consistent. And I think that's one of the big shifts that we are making. So that would be something to take attendance at these sessions going forward into September. We've also continued PD with teachers and teacher aides from two to three every day when the students have recess. There's a sign up. They sign up at least for twice a week, some more. I can't say enough about our volunteers who have conducted this PD along with words of advice and staff who have just taken this on from the Putnam Northern West Street Bosse's to work with our schedule. They've been phenomenal. The feedback on these sessions have been very positive. And some are about how to work with parents, how to work with the materials, how to use the tech. And some are also support for the teachers, just in terms of the struggles that we're all seeing as we're trying to navigate this. Our maintenance and custodial staff have been involved with Bosse's training on required topics, cleaning protocols and the COVID environment. So if anyone knows anything about cleaning in a COVID environment, I think that our staff has had a lot of training and I really appreciate Mike Tuardi's work on that as well. And I would be amiss without noting special ed, they've been meeting live with students using Google Meet, providing services in addition to the classroom educators. You know, there's our other support staff, people who've jumped in. We have our specials teachers. I've actually gotten excited about doing the core training along with Pat Beckley. One of our students the other day, one of our little guys actually did a 10-minute, a 10-minute plank. I said to him, I don't think you could, and he did. So it was pretty impressive. So there's lots of, lots of things happening. I, I don't know if you wanted a more specific, but I just wanted to be more general about what we're seeing and how we've grown. And so Carl will be part of those discussions as we go forward. So I thought I'd end on that in case there were some questions.
Questions? From the board?
Graduation questions, on the other hand, I'll let, we'll have Alex Levine talk about, but.
Sarah, do you have a question?
Just thank you for the overview. I appreciate it.
Yeah, just thanks for the overview. I think the, seems to me that what you're articulating here is that whatever asynchronous or synchronous learning activities or learning that happens, it has engagement as part of it in articulating our expectations is, is another part of it. So.
And I think the feedback from the parents has been a schedule helps. You know, if I'm working and I'm trying to take care of siblings or I have two who need to be on at a similar time, I really need to know what that timing is. And, and we originally started with a pretty strict schedule and then let teachers work it out because we were fitting in special ed and other pieces. So those are the kinds of adjustments we also need to make. But I couldn't be more proud of our teachers and, you know, the willingness to try. And honestly, it is experimental in some cases for some of them. This is not how they were trained and they're making an effort for sure.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I think everybody appreciates the amount, the kind of shift that's, that's required. I really do. I think, I think the other thing is we're also thinking about the future and what we, what we need to do now in June and what we need to articulate to parents or articulate, what, what we can articulate to staff for, just so that we're all prepared in September. David, you have, you have a question?
Deborah, I'd just be curious to know what you think in terms of how this experience approximated what a normal school experience would have been. Where did it come close to, to, to matching it and where was it furthest away?
It's, I think one of the struggles that the teachers had in sort of listening is typically when a student starts an assignment or starts some work, you're there to sort of look over the shoulder and see, are they, are they on target? Are they missing what we're, we're expecting? I think we had an advantage that we know the children, that the particular teachers worked with them for a good part of the year this year. So they can almost anticipate who might need a little more support as that lesson's going forth. I think next year that's going to be a challenge because you'll be seeing a whole new group of students that you don't know as well. But I think that piece of how do we sort of not have them start down the road? I would think the other thing that I heard teachers say is they, you know, when you know your craft, you don't realize what other people don't know. So assuming that parents knew what they knew. So realizing they needed to do a better structure of explaining what it is, the goals, what the objectives, how that was happening. So putting that together in a way that makes sense for parents. I think those were the two biggest struggles. I think the, where it comes closest, you know, in some of the live sessions, just seeing some of that excitement on the kids, the eagerness. I'm a believer that you, I really am a believer. And I know what Governor Cuomo has said about we can move into this technology teaching. I'm really a believer that we cannot, that we need teachers there with children in order to have effective instruction. That that partnership is, those relationships are key. And you can try to build relationships clearly this way. But it's not easy. I think that the responsibility of the students in terms of, you know, wanting to be part of this and not walking away. I think that was, that was impressive. Students who did get involved, maybe not when we wanted them to on those certain synchronous times, but then dropping into a teacher's office hours or in other ways getting involved or just uploading the work. We learned all kinds of things. We learned that just because they did it, they may not have uploaded it, didn't mean they didn't do it. I think one of the things that's better is kids can keep trying to do the work and it's not like they hit this deadline and they can't do, continue to work. I think the teaming part worked. I think the fact that you, you can connect with your colleagues. And I think that was really out of necessity. You know, I heard a teacher say to another teacher, you know, I, you, you're able to do that. I tried four ways and I couldn't make that happen. Tell me how you did it. So I think those kinds of conversations, David, that don't happen on a typical day in, in school. So I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I, I look forward to when we can get back to being there with students and not with masks and, and six feet apart. Because I don't know how you do that with little ones. Anything else?
Yeah, tall order, tall order. Any other questions? Can you guys hear me okay? We're doing all right?
You hear, you are loud and clear.
Okay. Got new technology here today. So, okay. Let's see, wait a minute here.
I'm going to be ahead of you and promote Alex because I.
Yeah, Alex, principals remarks, Alex?
I told them to keep them short, but I didn't keep mine short, so you don't have to listen to me.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the virtual background effect. How's everyone? This will be interesting.
It happens.
I have a few things, I'll try to go as quickly. I know we have a lengthy agenda. So first thing that I did want to go over were the proposed graduation scenarios. And we do, we are in the process of planning for a live in-person graduation. However, we have a couple of contingent plans, propose, you know, Plan A, Plan B. So our, our plans would be held same time, the evening of June 22 in the evening, and we would go ahead and have this outdoors, again, to try and adhere to some of the guidelines and recommendations. In our first kind of plan, we were advising or hoping to have each of our 15 graduating eighth graders accompanied by two guests. We would have clusters of three and then socially distance them appropriately. And then ensuring all of those things were in place as well. Making sure each spot is labeled appropriately. And of course, having, again, in consultation with Mr. Frank Gugliari, advising to have a no-touch diploma pickup or in this case of, of any of their materials or what have you, just to ensure that we're adhering to all those guidelines. These plans as well, we did share with the Putnam County Sheriff's Department for their review and possible support. So they are reviewing and making suggestions. So we appreciate their help and support. An alternative, if that isn't advisable, we would still go ahead and hold outdoors and consider having one car per family with the understanding that each family would remain in their cars, be in parking lot of the school, set up a projector, all of the appropriate audio equipment, so that would be in front of. set up a projector, all of the appropriate audio equipment, so that would be in front of the school for all of our families. We really want to make sure that we're giving our eighth graders their proper send off and recognition. So we're doing everything in our power. I would like to publicly recognize Mrs. Kathy Clark, who's absolutely wonderful and is giving so much of her time as she does each year. We do truly appreciate that as to our families. And then as for, we are also trying to pose a kind of graduation send off. So as you may hear, some districts are either having buses traverse communities or they may have car parades. Garrison's a little bit unique for that to perhaps happen. So we also did pose to Putnam County Sheriff's Department of possibly distancing our students and perhaps their families or just the students in front of the school along nine D as we would do for our Veterans Day. And make sure that we either had appropriate law enforcement to help slow traffic, to allow families to wave farewell and send them off while we thought that might be a nice way to recognize their achievements. Plan B, if that would be to reduce the number of participants, if we're within the current guidelines, to have it on two different evenings. So seven graduates on one evening and eight graduates on the other evening of Tuesday, which is by the way, our rain date. I would like to note too, and then I'll move on to the other things, I apologize. Upon their review, we're also going through, Putnam County Sheriff's Department may ask us to complete a request for service sheet. After they review, they said, we'll discuss by the end of the week. And there may be possible reimbursement or done for whole harmless purposes. However, they did note that given the current circumstances of these unprecedented circumstances, they may not request to do so, but they did want to make sure that that was conveyed appropriately.
Alex, are you going to put that plan also in front of the county exec?
We can. I think once I speak with them, they did say by the end of the week, they'll speak with me regarding their recommendations. And then I can go forward with, with that as well. So, and I will move through quickly and then if of course, there's any questions. I would like to publicly recognize our honor roll recipients for the third marking period. Thank you to the PCNR and the Highlands Current, who will be publishing them. All of our teachers, grades K through eight, leading to our kids to accomplish this, you know, prestigious recognition, especially given these circumstances. Another wonderful event by our K three teachers that was held yesterday was a virtual read aloud of Poppy Takes Paris with authors Alison Pataki and Maria Myers. There was a collection of approximately 60 students, all wonderfully engaged, microphones muted. And it was absolutely phenomenal and credit to our teachers who through these, through these times were able to still pull, pull that together and make sure that we are connecting with our kids. And what better way to do it with a great book? And yesterday was actually its release as well, so it was exciting for Alison and Maria as well. So we thank them for their time as well. Reminder for K five, we are coordinating pickup of items from school. Thank you to Mr. Twarty and his Buildings and Grounds crew for helping collect all those items, bag them, label them, and make sure it's a safe and orderly process. So we would ask that you please schedule pickup between nine and 12 PM of this week or next week. I will be sending out the other details and phone number to do so within the next day or so. We will be having an eighth grade student meeting this coming Tuesday at 3:30. So this will be a good opportunity to answer any questions that eighth grade may have. We've had a few meetings already to touch base. We'll discuss the eighth grade awards ceremony, which will be held virtually and that will be held on Friday, June 12th. So we'll be able to review those details. Other events, again, coming up next week, we will have our sixth grade virtual parent orientation, which will be Tuesday, June 2nd at 7:00 PM. So those will, that will be for all parents of current fifth graders and rising sixth graders are invited to join us. This will give an overview of the staff, the schedules and programs of study and much more. So we look forward to seeing our parents then. Related, on the, a few days later, on the fourth, we will have a middle school transition opportunity. So typically around this time last year, we gave our fifth graders an opportunity to walk the halls, go into the classrooms, meet the teachers. So we'll be doing so virtually. I appreciate the middle school stepping up and coordinating this opportunity for our current fifth graders to perhaps ease any anxiety as they transition into the middle school and answer any questions. As well, we have our virtual talent show. Thank you to the PTA, particularly Ms. Janetta and Ms. Beniaris, who have collected videos, are now compiling them to have a release, which will be officially released next Thursday at 6:00 PM. So thank you to them. And finally, today was for our third grade, it was the musical instrument showcase hosted by Mr. Connors, who was kind enough to show all the wonderful instruments that will be available to our students to begin playing in ensembles for this coming school year. So that was earlier this afternoon. So we thank him and our third graders for attending that at Zoom instrumental session. And those are my updates for this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any questions for Alex? No, just a tremendous amount of gratitude, Alex, for all the hard work you put in these last few weeks. The spec, you know, I think for you and the people in the building and especially for you, there's an intersection of activities and emotions and programming that has to fall squarely in the principal's shoulder, whether it's graduation, awards, all those, all those events, they really fall into the principal's purview. And I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work you're doing. It's an extraordinary time to pull off something that matters so much to so many people. So thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Let's see. Next up, we have, I, there is a, there is a question. I just want to let the questioners know that I'll read the questions during the public comment period. I think that's the best way to handle it. So we have, BOCES is here, right?
Well, my question is, I'm going to put James Ryan in.
James Ryan, familiar face?
Yes. Who would you like to have join you? Lynn, Lou, Todd, I mean, just keep naming and I'll bring them all up.
Are you asking me or are you asking James?
I was asking James. He can hear me. Can't talk yet. Maybe I'll just keep promoting everyone because I know who's on this list. At least I think I know who's on the list.
Very.
That would be, that would be great. You know, we have a few people who have joined us and we also.
There are a huge group who's joined you.
Mrs. Lilburn is here with us as well, I believe, so.
Wow.
Let me.
We thought there was going to be dinner served, so that's why we showed up.
All right. I, let me see. Who'd I miss? I missed Catherine.
You haven't seen our budget, I guess.
Jim, I missed Catherine? Who'd I miss?
There should be Lynn Allen, Lou Riolo, Todd Curry and Catherine Lilburn.
Yeah, Kathy Lilburn.
I got her. Okay, I just.
Okay.
If she doesn't get on here, I'll get harassed by her husband when I go for my next walk, so.
So I can't believe Todd were meeting like this, but that's all right. All right, that looks like our group.
Okay. All righty. So are we set? Okay, let me get started. First of all, I want to thank, thank Dr. Jackson for inviting us. I know we've been on your calendar for the past four or five months and was not sure how it was going to, how it was going to evolve. But we were, we were able to put together today's program. It's going to be a brief program, but it'll give you a, an overview of Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES and BOCES in general. For those of you that are not familiar, BOCES is the Board of Cooperative Educational Services. And it's a, it's a regional intermediate service agency that is a state connected with state. The Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES has provided a variety of services. Before we get started though, I want to thank Dusty for, for making the arrangements to, to put together and load our, our presentation. I know there's a little bit of a PowerPoint that, and a video that was to be shared with you. If that's possible, I'll, I'll give you a minute to do that. And while you're doing it, I'll just keep, keep going. Want to thank our, our board trustee, Kathy Lilburn, who is a resident of Garrison. There are, there are 18 districts represented in Putnam Northern Westchester. And of those 18, there are seven board members. And the Garrison has a representative. The representatives are at large, they represent all 18 districts. But the Garrison Union Free School District has Mrs. Lilburn. And we're very pleased and proud that she's been such a, an influential part of our operated vice president of the board for the past several years. As you see before you, the, the Garrison Union Free School District, there's your, there's the building. And as we go through, Dusty, are you going to control this if you could?
Yes, I will.
Along. That's good. The, the next is kind of a, the focus point of our, of our operation is service and innovation in part, through partnership. And the fact that we spend considerable amount of time working with the school districts in the Putnam Northern Westchester region to ensure that quality services are provided above and beyond what a single district could, could offer. If you think about it, we have, we have services in a wide range of, of activity, special education, career and technical ed. And you'll see these promoted through, through the presentation as I go along. But no one district could provide the services that the BOCES is able to provide to the districts regionally. So our, our, our vision is to be a premier educational service agency in New York State. And we believe we accomplish that through providing pathways to success for every student and making certain that we focus on quality and have established a culture of excellence within our region. Most of you are aware that we, our campus, main campus is in Yorktown Heights and has been there since, in its current form, since the, since the late 50s. Kind of evolved during the, during the 1950s after the inception of BOCES in 48. Putnam Northern was the second BOCES that came online around the state. And the facility was, was built during those 1950s and into the 1960s. Okay. The, the history I've kind of quickly covered, but again, put in place around New York State so that districts could be supported in a wide range of services. The original, the original BOCES services were really itinerant services in special education. Youngsters who really had high needs that the districts could not support with specialty areas locally. BOCES hired staff that went out into the districts to work with, with children with disabilities. Subsequent to that, the, the development of career and technical education and really the traditional trades were established in the 1950s and into the 1960s. So you would see BOCES around the state providing what was the traditional trades of, you know, carpentry, HVAC, masonry, electrical, and just a wide range of offerings there. The programs have since evolved considerably. The next set, you have a, a video that will really give you an overview of everything that BOCES provides and the way it services. And it's easier for me to provide that to you in this form than to attempt to provide a services guide review manually. So we'll go through that if we could, Dusty, that'd be great. There should be an audio for that as well.
BOCES Career and Technical Education Center offers nearly 15 programs of study in in-care academies. Courses range from familiar favorites like our award-winning Urban Orchardry Program to Sports Medicine and Physical Therapy to Cyber Security and Programming. New Vision Programs provide an entree to health and engineering careers for college-bound students. BOCES Special Education Programs work to ensure that every child reaches his or her full potential. In our Pine Bridge, Walden and Potza Meadows Schools, in our programs at local school buildings, we provide support including physical and occupational therapy, speech therapy, teachers of the deaf and teachers of the visually impaired. Yet our schools look and sound like typical schools, complete assemblies, music and art, talent shows, book fairs and physical education class. The Guidance and Child Study Center ensures pathways to success for every student by providing services such as audiology, assistive technology, behavior, speech and psychiatry. It also brings clinicians, educators, school leaders together to share best facts. Because leading a school district requires so much more than what is visible in the classroom, BOCES offers a host of management services like regional safety services and essential for educational leadership. Regional safety supports districts with emergency planning, crisis response, chemical management, fire safety and more. The Center for Educational Leadership partners with colleges and universities such as Harvard University, Yale University, Bank Street College, Columbia University and Van Kattingen College to offer programs such as the Future School Leaders Academy, the doctoral program in educational leadership and emotional intelligence training. If families, students, teachers and districts search for a way forward, they need only one to Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES to find their own pathway to success. To find out more about how Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES can help your students, check out our services guide.
Well, the, the sound was a little off, I'm sorry to say, but the, the gist of the message is that over, over the 70-year period, the, the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES has developed into a really comprehensive series of offerings for both students and faculty and staff throughout the Putnam Northern Westchester region. For, for our work with our 18 component districts, we work closely with our superintendents, assistant superintendents for instruction and other administrative staff throughout the districts in order to connect them and the students and families with quality career and tech options. We probably have well over a thousand youngsters that are involved in career and tech. The special education, we have nearly 500 students that are served in our special education programs. Professional development and learning activities for administrators, teachers, support staff of every kind, often through our professional learning division. And clearly our 18 component districts are really heavily involved there. Our leadership and management services, you heard Deborah talk about Frank Gugliari as our regional safety coordinator. He's a person who's a point person within the region, working with the school districts on, on safety services and specifically responding to the, the COVID-19 issues that have surfaced in the last several months. The, the leadership piece is an opportunity. And with our 18 district, we're really pleased to have a great group of superintendents. We're so pleased that Deborah was able to join us this week, this year. She's a, she's an experienced superintendent of schools and really was an asset to Garrison during the course of, of, of this year, going through the winter and spring. Clearly, I wouldn't want to have anybody else in place as we were facing the challenges of the, of the closure that occurred in mid-March and we're continuing with now. of the, of the closure that occurred in mid-March and we're continuing with now. The opportunity to, to connect with, with Deborah and James and I spoke about this earlier and the chance for, for, for me to introduce her to, to him and connect them really was a great opportunity for everyone to have a successful winter and spring here in Garrison. We're very familiar with Carl Albano and we, we really look forward and welcome him aboard and we're able to support him in any way we can. Just one last piece, you know, the oversight of a really comprehensive series of offerings that really assists our 18 component districts is one of the roles and responsibilities of the district superintendent of schools. Also, the representative, the commissioner here in the lower Hudson region and for our 18 components. That's been a little bit of a challenge. You heard from Deborah's report, there's a lot of unknown coming out of SED right now and we're trying to do what we can to connect our districts with that information. So it's not always easy for, especially a smaller district, to, to be connected and be informed and be, be supported. And the opportunity for us to do that with, and with and through Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES is really our pleasure. For me personally, I'm a resident of Cold Springs, so I'm like five minutes away from, from the school and I've always enjoyed the opportunity to stop in and to see how things are going and say hello and certainly willing and looking forward to do that in the future. We offer some really interesting professional development right now for staff and the work that we're doing in a program called Professional Development On The Go is really been instrumental in connecting teachers with current technologies, teaching them a little bit as to how to perform in this environment. And I'm going to ask Dr. Alan Lynn if you would comment on the professional development opportunities that are being offered and what some of the Garrison staff are taking advantage of right now.
Sure, it would be my pleasure. Thank you, Dr. Ryan.
I just wanted to remind all the other guests and the attendees to make sure they mute their mics so that we have a clean transfer of info and sound, okay?
Thank you so much. And as, thank you, Dr. Ryan. As Dr. Ryan said, we have four major areas of programs and services. And Dusty, you can, you can, you can flip through the next couple. Dr. Ryan spoke about our Career and Technical Education Center. Many of your students join us there, our special ed division just gives you a picture representation of some of the things we provide there. And next, Dusty, you'll bring me right to the slide for professional learning and curriculum. And it's really an honor and a pleasure for us to serve the professional development needs of Garrison and all of our 18 component districts and beyond. And you'll see here, again, a visual representation of all of the professional development departments that we now have at Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES, most of which Garrison participates in. And just to highlight a few, and I should say that all of these were created pre-COVID-19 era and they continue, continue, as Dr. Ryan said, in the virtual form even now and will certainly go forward and beyond. But as you can see here, I'll just highlight a few of these things, many of you will be familiar with them. Our Curriculum and Instructional Services is the home of our Curriculum Council and your own Alex Levine is a leader in that, that particular group that really sets the direction for all of our professional learning in the region. Also, in Curriculum and Instructional Services, Garrison participates in our Science 21 Program, our Social Studies, English Language Arts, the list goes on. And Guidance and Child Study Center, you'll see next across the top of that slide. And they have provided Garrison with a multitude of different services, including those that focus on social, emotional learning and wellness, trauma-informed and trauma-responsive offerings, as well as some services, document translation and special ed and PPS support. So again, anything having to do with mental health, mental wellness comes out of our Guidance and Child Study Center. Next, if you go across the top, is our Center for Educational Leadership. And that is an area that you also participate in and you are a member of our Yale Cohort Three and that is our ruler training. Also, you will be participating, I believe, Dr. Jackson, in the strategic coherence planning that will come up in the fall for, for Garrison with Jonathan Costa. And I should, before I leave Center for Educational Leadership, I should say also through our college partnership programs, Alex Levine is in one of our doctoral programs with Manhattanville College. So we're very proud to have him as one of our cohort members. And here, Dusty has taken us to our Leadership and Management Services. And you'll see that, just I'll touch on a few here, the Creative Services Department and School Communications, they partnered with Garrison in the fall to create your Capital Project video and some of the print materials that have went along with that. We've already spoken many times about Regional Safety Services, that's Frank Uglieri, Carol Sneed, and the group who provides training and really has become instrumental in leading our entire region, including Garrison through the COVID-19 process and now looking forward to reentry of schools. Also, Model Schools, you are a member of that and Jen Wilson is our coordinator in that program. And I know that she has provided at least a couple of trainings on how to use Zoom for distance learning and customize them for your, your learning needs, among many other things. And here you'll also see our Regional Crisis Team, our Administrator's Regional Crisis Team. We have representation from Garrison there, Jessica Van Decker, Krista Diego, and Alex Levine represents our Administrator's Regional Crisis Team. And you may know a little bit about those services and we very much appreciate those individuals from Garrison going into other districts when they've suffered a great loss or need additional service. And we hope that both of those services have also provided support and comfort to you when you have had a loss or a situation in your district where you've needed some extra support from counselors in the region. But again, we really view you as partners, we see you as leaders in our region, we value your input and the needs that you have, look forward to continuing to serve you now through COVID-19 era and far into the future. So thank you very much for this time and hopefully these representational visuals have given you a little window into the world of the professional development we provide to all of you. Thank you, Dr. Ryan.
Thank you, thank you, Lynn, I appreciate that. I, I think one thing that comes through that and clear is the fact that we've attempted and I think been successful at creating a really collegial environment here in Putnam Northern Westchester. And no matter what the size of the district, everyone feels as if they have a, a connection back through a series of colleagues that exists from, from, from Bedford right on through to Yorktown. So we go, go right through our 18 components and we're just so pleased and proud to be able to offer those services. So with that, James, that was all we, we hope to share with you today and we really, again, appreciate working with Deborah, she's a real pro and, and I've known her for many years and always enjoyed the working relationship we've, we've had.
Well, I think Jimmy, you'll find too many objections to the, the thought that we were lucky to have Dr. Jackson through this particular crisis. And it's just a font of information and wealth of experience and, and, and we're happy that Carl Albano's been able to step in to some of those planning meetings, reentry meetings as well and COVID-19 crisis meetings that have been going on and we appreciate your openness there. So I think, we wanted to start the questioning with a kind of a, a simple question and that is that you offer a suite of services basically to the districts and, and the superintendent works with the building, generally speaking, to determine what services that they are going to contract. Is that about how it rolls, right?
Yeah, depending on the size of the district and, and so on, depending on whether it's a secondary, you have high school offerings in some of the districts. So there may be a little bit of different connection, but yeah, superintendent and building administration.
And I think one thing, reason we, one thing is we have a new board, we wanted to hear, you know, the kinds of things that our, our students and our, our staff are engaging in when it comes to BOCES. It's also a significant portion of our budget, of course, that, that lends to scrutiny. But I think really what drew us to this, this was all pre-COVID, this conversation, by the way, was is there a way that we can sort of analyze how, or the insight that you could provide, how we've used your services? Could we use them smarter? Could we, what kind of expectations for when we have a particular professional development program, for instance, other for administration or teachers? What, how long should those relationships build? What kind of expectations toward, you know, weaning us off one service so we can acquire another? I'm wondering if there's like an audit level kind of service that you provide or counsel each district and superintendent tour about how we're accessing, whether we're under-accessing certain areas or over-accessing other areas? I don't know because I'm not down, I'm not involved in that ground level kind of thing. But it is the sort of meta-question that how we are making sure that the smartest relationships, the most positive relationships are being developed and fostered and nurtured. Does that make any sense, James?
Absolutely, sure, sure. And, you know, when, when Deborah arrived, I, first, first few days I was here in the office with her talking about, you know, the transition and talking about the, the opportunities that BOCES provides. We do, we do provide a, a review of, of, of program participation that we can develop and, and, and share both with Deborah as she's wrapping up, but also as Carl's coming in and will also share with the board. You can get a extent to the, to the degree to which you are, you know, how many kids are served and how many, how many programs staff participates in, what types of programs they are. And, and we can, we can conduct, you know, a, an entry plan for Carl as he comes in to take a look at what types of things have been discussed with the board and what types of priorities you have and how our, our menu of services align with, with, with those interests. Everything's pay-as-you-go, so to speak, so there's not, it's not, you're not losing out on anything, but we did have some preliminary conversations about special education support and, and the, the strategic coherence planning and such did come up as well and we pointed in that direction. So the answer is yes, we, let us, let us move, go forward and, and do the first step of providing a recent analysis of program participation and such and, and we can, we can go from there.
And in terms of professional learning, I just, forgive me, I did not mention that you have a lot of professional learning that is what we call value-added. So a lot of our virtual trainings now are no-cost to districts and one of the things we pride ourselves on is attempting to build capacity. So for instance, Garrison is a member of our Yale Ruler Training and part of that is being a cohort. And then that, those skills that the members of Garrison are learning, you can take beyond that training and implement in your district. And therefore you've received the training and then it's turnkey and you'll be able to then be independent going forward. And a lot of our trainings are that way. So I'm sorry that I didn't mention that in my presentation.
That's a great point though, because if you go around our 18 and you look at the region and whether it be North Salem or Briar Cliff or Haldane or Garrison, you know, you could, you could say some of the so-called smaller districts may not have the capacity. So how do we build the capacity within the region? And I think we've been really effective at bringing the 18 together and assisting so that no, no, no administrator feels he or she is hanging out there on their own or no, no teacher's in a position where they feel as if they don't have access to, to quality professional development. And, and it's done in a really collegial way. So be happy to share more specifics with the board, but also with, with Deborah as she transitions and, and as Carl comes in, we'd be happy to talk about that and happy to stop over.
Let me give you an example, something Lynn did. We, as the superintendents, were talking about the need to really bring some of our teachers in this COVID environment, e-learning, who don't have anyone to talk to, like our music teachers, art teachers, specialists, yes. And we said, you know, there are people that they don't have a colleague to talk to about what's working and what's not. Lynn immediately put together these meetings, virtual meetings of those groups and our teachers did participate. And again, the feedback was, it was good to talk to, and I'll use music because we just did this third grade piece today. It was great to talk to another music teacher to get some ideas because I wasn't quite sure how all this was going to work. And, and so I just, to me, that's just an example. And just so you know, we are moving forward as a district with the special ed piece. We put it on hold because it was supposed to start the day we went out, but we met Carl and I and Bobby Wiener just last week and so we're ready to gear that up again. But I think that piece with those teachers where Lynn just said, I can make that happen, that's just an example, I think, of what you were trying to describe.
Yeah, I think, David, you have a question?
Hi Jim, it's really a question about your career or technical program. You know, we hear so much about how the workforce is evolving in areas where jobs are disappearing and other areas where jobs are growing. And I guess the general question is how carefully do you monitor that in putting together your career and technical programs? And I guess more specifically, I'm, I'm wondering, there's certainly a sentiment among many economists that the, the green sector of the economy is a growth sector. And I'm wondering if you guys are offering programs in the solar industry, for instance, and regenerative agriculture, that sort of thing?
Great questions. As I mentioned upfront, the, traditionally people have a mindset of the, of the trades and we have over 40 offerings that are really more state-of-the-art in terms of, of, area as well as digital and graphic design, a lot of, a lot of high-end tech offerings that are, that are available to students. We have a suite of health careers that are offered to youngsters that have gone well beyond the traditional nursing programs that existed years ago, but are now much more, much more detailed and specific in terms of their offering. I'm gonna, I'll ask some of the people that are more directly related, I'll ask Lynn and Todd, I mean, and Todd and Lou to chime in, but I, I think our connection to the community, we have, we have, for, for staff and connecting out with employers in the region, we are connected to the workforce development boards within the region. We have connections with unions and so on on certain levels, but also have some, some other kinds of offerings that they can, they can speak of a little bit more detail. So Lynn, Lou, do you?
Lou chief, you want to go ahead or?
Well, I just, I, I think we're always constantly looking to expand what we have. For example, our computer programming division, where we, over the last couple of years has gone from, I think we started with 15, now we're over 50. So we're constantly looking to engage kids in, in more modern technology and stuff. Forestry program has boomed the last couple of years. It's become, you know, so integral and it integrates, you know, how, how to deal with the environment, how to deal, deal with, you know, dealing with not just simple pruning and stuff, but basically high-tech equipment to basically forestry, why do you forest in basically environmentally healthy ways? So I mean, there's so many things that are going on constantly. We're always looking for our, our component districts and the, and the students to suggest those are the other areas that we want to grow in. But it's a, it's a big push, you know, the trades are a big push. And even though they are trades, over 85% of our students still go on to college. So they have that component along with the academic piece and they've, they've been extremely successful. They've been extremely successful.
And you asked about solar programs and, and other things, our director and our, Career and Technical Education Division always calling for the research that tells us where the jobs are. And our urban, urban forestry program that Lou just mentioned, those students are almost guaranteed jobs as soon as they leave us. There is just such a high demand for that. While we don't have anything in solar, the data and the research around us doesn't indicate that, we're always looking for new areas to train our students. And, and the partnerships, as Dr. Ryan said, we do have a partnership with Kelly Foster Farm. That's where we house our veterinary tech program and also our culinary program. And we benefit from the great opportunities there with the animals and with the agriculture and we fold all of that into some of the programs there. So it's just a vast array of programming, but always, always, always connected to where the jobs are when students leave us if they don't choose to continue their education. And we also have a work-based learning coordinator with our Career and Technical Education Department, internships, exposure to the jobs, aside from just the learning in the classroom is a critical part of the, the division also. Hope that helps.
If you take a look, programs like graphic art and design, TV production have really, have really begun to take off. We also have a, what's called a new visions, which is a high-end college-connected program in engineering as well as in medicine and, and health science. So it's, David, it's driven a lot by the recommendations and the, and the preferences of the guidance staff, but we, we absolutely are out there pushing to, to keep the options and, and opportunities current. And, and, you know, your point is well, well-taken. There, there are things that we can continue to push and There are things that we can continue to push and, and will. But what's, what's a real unknown is that when you look at 43 options for kids, if people started rattling them off, they would probably get as far as, geez, I know BOCs, I know HVAC and plumbing and heating. And, but it goes well beyond that, as you can well, well know. And the, the kinds of things that kids have opportunities to do that, that a Haldane or Garrison or any, any one district could pull off on its own is, is provided on our campuses so well. But we're open to suggestions. If there, if there are other things that, that are going to click for us and, and connect out into the, the workplace, we're, we're, we're open and ready to do that. Great question.
Sarah?
Hi, thank you for being here. Thank you for connecting us with Deborah. Really appreciate it. Dr. Jackson is a wonderful asset to us, especially during this unique time. I had a question about the distance learning program. I saw it on one of your slides. Is that new? Have you, did you add that PD since the COVID crisis? Or did you have something in place before? And if it is new, how are you changing and evolving it as we learn more about what is needed?
Great point. We have a variety of distance options from, from what's called OC 21, which I'm going to pass the ball and ask to, to have, have Lynn comment on. But there, there, there are options that we have in place that are, that are really use the technology, but also some of the content is so current and interesting that we have. Lynn, you want to talk a little bit about that and what, what's happening on, on that point? As well as you can connect that back to some of the work that's being really aggressively pursued now, given the, the shift to technology that's, that's, that's right on us as a result of, of the current environment.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. It is a great question, something we're very proud of as, as professional learning leaders in the region. We had several years back felt that we needed to really take a stance in, in being progressive with distance learning. At that time, we hired a coordinator of educational technology, that's Jennifer Harrington Wilson. And she came on to assist our division, special education and career and technical education, as well as teachers in the region, to learn more about instructional technology and implementing that in the classrooms. And that has, that had been going on far beyond the COVID-19 crisis. And then more recently, again, before COVID-19, our districts had asked and identified a need for more of technology training in their schools. So we developed our own strand of model schools, and Garrison is a member of that. And so we, we really, I think if, if we had been talking and doing this presentation pre-COVID-19, we would have been very proud to tell you all of the things that we were doing for our teachers, for our students. But then COVID-19 was upon us. And we are just amazed at how not only our professional learning division, Jennifer Wilson, and, and all of, all of our professional learning leaders have stepped up to learn how to provide professional learning education to students in the virtual format is far beyond what we could have expected. What we have learned in a short period of time with the skills we always had, I just can't, I can't express it in words. And what I can tell you is the things that we're learning now, with all of our professional learning being done virtually, some of the things that we are learning now, we will carry forward, we will keep them, they will stick. Not everything, because nothing really replaces the in-person learning, particularly for our students and our adult learners. But much of what we had the tools to do, we weren't nearly leveraging it. So in many ways, one of the silver linings of COVID-19 was to utilize all of those skills, all of that expertise, and bring it forward within the BOCs and in the region. And I'm proud to say that we have been able to do that, and I think at a very high quality. And I must say, I give a nod to Garrison because you too have stepped up and used the, the skills that you've always had, the equipment, and we're glad to play a part in supporting that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any other questions? I'd be remiss not to recognize Kathy Lilburne, she lives right up the street from me. And whose bookstore I sometimes frequent, usually Friday afternoons after five o'clock. So I look forward to the day of seeing you again, Kathy, on the stoop. And hopefully Carl will be able to join us as well. So.
I apologize that I did not realize that I had to turn my video on for quite a long time. So I, I'm sorry about that. I, I wanted to say something that always I found difficult. When our kids leave our doors in eighth grade and they go off to Haldane, we still feel like they're our kids, but we don't always get the information about how our kids are doing once they're involved in our BOCs and career in tech, or whatever it is. And I, I look for our administrators to try and point that out to our board, so your board, so that they can understand how BOCs is continuing to help our children even after they're not officially our students anymore.
Yeah, I think there's, I think that's excellently reminding, you know, we, once in a while, we were such a small district and we have one building. So it's very easy for a board to get sucked down in the K through eight into the building. And one of the jobs of the president and the superintendent in this dream mind us that we're, we're responsible and obligated and should be enriched by our relationships with the pre-K all the way up to the 21-year-olds or whoever we're serving in different contexts. And I think definitely trying to make sure that students, no matter what setting they're in, private, public, BOCs, in district, out of district, that we are accounting. And also, you know, tracking their, their progress and making sure that things are going smoothly. So I hear you loud and clear, loud and clear. Any other comments, any other thoughts? I need them. Thank you so much for coming. Dr. Jackson, you want to make a?
No, just simply thank you. Thank you for the whole team. It's, it's been a pleasure always to work with Putnam Northern Western State BOCs. From my experience, and obviously you've been involved with the state, the difference really is that Putnam Northern Western is just known as the place where really the innovation takes place and professional development takes place. It's very collegial. And that environment is not typical in BOCs. And I'm sorry to say that, Jim, but it's not. But this BOCs makes a real effort to make that happen and make everyone feel welcome. So simply, as we talked about, those first two needs I had, I asked and immediately, you know, your team put me together with everyone I needed. And it's remarkable that we have that kind of support, especially being a small school. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's been several occasions where we've needed some significant help, especially in emergency response or, and in other areas as well, and BOCs continues to supply that. So, you know, thank you. But, you know, as we make this transition from interim to a permanent superintendent, I just wanted to, I think it was, it's actually a pro of us to have this conversation and sort of revisit the relationship and how to best enhance it. So I would look forward to that conversation. Thank you so much.
As do we, sure.
Okay, ciao.
I will mount. How's that? In no order, just put them back into, and we have a presentation coming up next from, on our design team for our construction project.
Yeah, I need a motion to amend the agenda as so printed.
So moved.
I'll move second.
Okay, I would like to, I need a motion to allow for the presentation by Tetra Tech and Calgy Construction. I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Thank you. All right, second. Call in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let it be known, Dusty, that we're amending the agenda to allow for Tetra Tech to provide a presentation. This presentation has been in the works. It was just difficult for, for us to change the agenda remotely. So we just had to make that technical parliamentary decision. So thank you. Garrett, is that you?
Hello, everyone.
All right.
Start there. Is there anyone else you'd like me to move into the, the presentation?
What, I think Dominic's in the audience. If you could promote him as well. The two of us will be enough for tonight.
Dominic, there you go. Promote the panelist. Anyone else? That's it?
That's it for tonight. I think we're good. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes.
Good. Okay, I'll get started. Now it's a busy night, so we'll, we'll dive, dive right in. Hello, everyone. We really have one main topic tonight, and that's to discuss the HVAC system replacement. I want to give you all an update. And I have to say, I'm really excited to be doing this. It seems like it is years in the making. And so really glad to talk about it tonight. I will start with a couple of images of the boiler rooms, which are no longer going to be boiler rooms because the oil-fired steam boilers, this is the elementary boiler room down near the cafeteria. Those maroon shaded rectangles of the boilers and all that dash lines represent items that are going to be removed, all the piping and associated components of those. The same thing in the middle school. The oil-fired hot water boilers will be removed, the pumps, the breaching to the flue, all the piping, that'll all be going away because you will no longer have a oil-fired system in the Garrison schools. It'll be a electric-based variable refrigerant flow system. One thing I want to point out on this slide in the upper right corner, the fuel oil day tank is going to remain. You're going to have a hot water heater for hot water, especially in the summer, that will be, remain oil. And you'll also have propane serving the kitchen, the stove in the kitchen. So the whole heating system will be completely electric-based. There will be a little bit of fossil fuel left in, in those little corners of the building.
Can we, can we sell those boilers or is there a market for?
What, what happens is.
Black market boilers?
There, there is some, generally some scrap value in that. And so the contractors that are bidding on the project will factor that into their bid. They'll make decisions on what's, what it's worth and how much they can get and what it's going to cost to take it away. And then they'll do the best they can to put it into the right places generally.
Company won't buy it back. The manufacturer won't buy it. Just, all right.
So this is a, a first floor plan of the entire building, and it highlights what is one of the three main components of a variable refrigerant flow heating system. And that is the outdoor heat pumps. These are components that will sit outside. They will each serve portions of the building. And so the building will all be zoned. And some of these heat pumps will be manifolded together to have multiple heat pumps serving one series of zones. And they, they will be visible outside, especially from the back. Talked today with Mike Towery, going through the system with him. And we think it would be advisable for the ones that are along the backside to probably have a little fencing around them for both aesthetics, but also some security to the, to the equipment as well. And then there'll be a, a little heat pump, heat pump farm also in the courtyard. We are having some conversation. These devices do make noise. And so we're going to locate them in the courtyard as judiciously as possible to minimize the noise impact that will happen for, for a classroom. I think that's a little too close to that one classroom window. Heat pump are shown in the courtyard. So if I move to the second floor plan, this, the gym, the upper gym is on the left of this drawing. And I think actually, I'm going to just jump out here. Can everybody see my cursor moving now? Is that working okay? So I'm going to do this so I can point. So these are the air handling units that serve the gym. And those are equipment that actually has some life left in it. And the ductwork, these are the ducts that serve the, that space are here. That ductwork is also in reasonably good condition. And so what we're planning on doing is removing the gas-fired portions of these that are related to the boilers, the coil pulling it out in the middle and replacing that with electric VRF system equipment so that this existing equipment can be reutilized. Very, very good use of something that's still good, but converted to the new system. We are looking to have the manufacturer of those units provide us some information. They've been a little reticent to do that. And so we need to make sure that they're going to be on board with what we want to do. Otherwise, we would replace those units as part of the project. I also want to point out the little green rectangles in each of the classrooms. This is the, these are the middle school classrooms as a corollary of what will happen in the elementary school classrooms. Those are the terminal units. That will be the device that actually is providing the heating or the cooling into the space itself. It will look very much like a traditional unit ventilator, but it will be fully electric and variable refrigerant flow system. High, as, as we all know, highly energy efficient, very, very green system. So I will jump back into the presentation here, and we'll go to the next slide. This is a diagram of how one of the zones of this system works. This is pretty technical. I'm not going to dive too deep. We can ask any questions and go as deep as you like tonight or in the future. The blue rectangles represent two of the outdoor heat pumps. They are, this is actually serving the first floor east wing. You can read that up at the top. So this is the elementary school on the far side of the, the building, that one wing there, two heat pumps serving that. The orangish hand box in the middle is referred to as the distribution box. This is a very sort of intricate part of the system, and there will be a distribution box in each of the zones. And that has all the smarts in it that understands what each space is calling for. It has refrigerant flowing through it, piping flow through it, and it sends it out to each of the the terminal units, which are green. In this instance, most of these are unit ventilators. There may be a fan quote unit on this zone. No, I don't see that. And, and all of the zones of the building, it will be just like this. So it's heat pumps outside, distribution boxes inside. Generally, those are smaller. I'll show you a picture one. They're up in the corridor ceiling, tucked out of the way. And then the units in the classrooms or the offices or all the other spaces in the building, cafeteria, gym, you name it. So these are some visuals. I always sort of think it helps to give an eye for what these things look like. So in the upper left are the outdoor variable refrigerant flow heat pump units. Those are two packs that are two heat pump units manifolded together. The district, they're, they're about the size of a refrigerator. They are 30 inches by 30 inches in, in plan and about 70 inches tall. So these, they're pretty good sized units that we'll have for the system. The distribution box on the right, you can see the piping going in and then the individual piping going out to all the various zones. And then the terminal devices, this is just an example of some of the kinds of terminal devices that, that are manufacturers provide and that will be using in the system. So that is what I have to share tonight, presentation-wise for the HVAC replacement. I'll talk a little bit about schedule and next steps, but before I do that, does anyone have questions? No? Okay. It's a, it's a pretty complex system. And it's going to take some time for Mike to get up to, Mike Towery and the staff to get up to speed on it. And so the, the specifications that we write will require the contractor to provide extensive training for Mike so that he gets everything he needs to be able to operate the system well. So if there are no other, no questions? Okay.
So.
Great. So here's the project timeline. This is the same that I've showed at the last couple of board meetings. I just want to refresh your memory that we're now into design development phase. We're working hard on it. I, I should have mentioned at the outset of my presentation that we did do a meeting with Dr. Jackson and Mr. Albano to review the capital project. Carl's really up to speed already. He's read all the documents. He reviewed the board minutes or the board presentation. Had some really good questions for us about this timeline, about construction phasing and those things. So we're, we're working hard to make sure the transition's seamless, and I'm, I'm confident that's going to happen. And we're going to see construction happening. And we're going to see construction happening in April of 2021, starting next year. That's the goal here. Next step. So this is the same slide I showed you last time. This is the last slide of the presentation tonight, and I'll highlight that we do want to, we have some more work to do on the security and phone system, and once we have that ironed out and we'll, more clarity on that from a design standpoint, I'll come and bring that to you as a board and present that. We have the survey underway, so we'll be able to make some recommendation on the play area, and then there's a new item on this slide, and that's the construction phasing plan. One of the questions that Carl asked yesterday when we met was about phasing, and how does this project work with keeping school operational, assuming that school is like we knew it to be last year when this construction's going on? So we're going to be meeting with the construction manager, with the administration, probably have teacher involvement and thinking through what this is going to look like. It's going to be, it's going to have an impact on the operations of the building during the school year, and we want to be careful to plan for how that's going to go. And then, as we said last time, all user group owner decisions made by the end of the school year. I think we're right on track for that, and we're in really good shape to be on, to stay on schedule. So that's all I have for you tonight, folks. Is there anything I can answer either on this presentation or otherwise?
Questions? Garrett, you said that your firm has some experience with the VRF, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
And I was wondering, Dominic, I was wondering if you've had any experience with this particular system?
No, not really. We have to get into this system ourselves and fully, excuse me, fully understand it and its implications, especially with regard to the overall phasing of the project.
Okay.
Phasing is going to be really key, getting both systems operating at the same time and then taking over portions of the building sequentially. That's going to, that's going to be a real, real challenge. I'm sure we can do it, but that's-
So it's not so much the technology and engineering involved. It's more the, how that's going to, how phasing will impact usage and things like that?
Yeah.
Definitely, yes.
It's certainly a complex engineering system, but from a construction standpoint, Dominic's spot on. We got to, got to be careful to make sure we can keep you guys operational and get this successfully into the building.
Any questions for Garrett? Dominic, I'm sure that Carl's writing a few now on a pad. So we expect more. Thank you so much. Yes, and take care. I guess you'll see Matt and Jill soon enough, correct? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
I seem, there we are. Great. I haven't lost you completely. Terrific. Alrighty, let me see what's up here. Next up, financial report. Sue? Sue? There's Sue.
She's coming. I just had it promoted up.
Dope. Yeah, got it.
So you just put your audio-
Camera and audio on there, Sue? That'd be terrific, or at least the, yeah.
I'll ask her to start the video. I can ask. And I can unmute there.
There we are. Hi, Sue.
Hi. I'm sorry, but I'm just, I'm seeing like a Zoom screen. I'm not seeing any of you. Hold on a second.
We're here.
It could be tucked behind. Sometimes that happens.
Yeah, you got tucked behind on me. Can you hear me?
Beautifully.
Okay, great, great. Good evening, everybody. How are you? Um, I, I know that there's first the budget and revenue status reports. There really wasn't much change since I gave you reports two weeks ago, but if you have any questions, you can go over those. I'm going to go directly into the treasures report since there's two of those. We have March. I'm going to start with the investment report for March. We started out with $8,421,937, had interest of $3,230.70 and transfer funds to the multi-fund of $950,000. So we ended the month with $7,475,168.46. For the multi-fund, we started March out with $861,670. And overall revenues of just, there's actually a transfer in there of like $3,575, and then overall expenses and transfers of just under $3 million. So we ended the month at $1,297.6, excuse me, $6,4975. And then going into April, we started the investment at the $7,475,176, ended the month with $6,585,897. There's a transfer there. You'll see at the bottom, if you look at the bottom, there's a wire transfer there of $890,451. That was a transfer to the capital fund because the capital fund bank statement ends at a different time than the money market bank statement. You don't see it going into the capital fund, so you'll see it in the May statement. That was the transfer, if you recall, when we had the PISA project referendum. We said we would move funds from the general fund into the capital fund for expenses. So that was me moving that money. And then in the multi-fund, we started out with that $1,297,649.75, had overall revenue of $517,231, and overall expenses of $5 million, just about, I mean, just about $500,000. So we ended the month at $1,302,775.64. Any questions on that?
Questions?
Okay, so that's something you have to approve or?
Yeah, yeah, I have to, let me get to my line. Yeah. The, I need a motion to, hold on for a minute. Motion to accept the treasures report for March 20 and April 20?
So moved.
Take it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Show of hands. Okay.
Next, there's a budget transfer of $69,050. The majority of this is computer hardware that we bought. We recently bought more laptops for the teachers and devices for students for next year, and then other little minor things. So there's an overall budget transfer of $69,050.
Right, and I think this is to account for the amount of remote learning going on and having the tools necessary.
Well, some of it is, and actually, the equipment that we're replacing is over five years old, so a lot of it was earmarked to be replaced anyway.
Right. It's timing, right?
Yes, timing.
Yeah. The life of a laptop is brief, it seems, right?
Yes.
Way too brief.
So are we able to pull from like the oil, electric, and diesel because we've been not- Yes, absolutely. I mean, we're just not spending on the fuel oil. Obviously, we're not in the building. I mean, I know we are heating the building, but not like we would if we were all in there, and the electric we're not using. And the contractual, that is part of the, that contractual number right there is really actually a moving of funds from the computer hardware that I had budgeted on a different line in the technology area. So it's really just moving funds from one, in one area.
Right, so we're moving, we're transferring rather than drawing down, let us say. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay. In plain speak, that's what it is. All right. I need a motion to approve a budget transfer number eight.
So moved.
Second. Okay, be resolved. Board of Education, Garrison, UFR School, hereby approves budget transfer number eight. All those in favor, say aye, raising your hand. Dusty? Yeah, there we go. Terrific. Alrighty. Now up is the school budget, no small thing, right? Public hearing of the school budget. Sue, what do you have to do?
I think Dusty's going to upload a presentation, a small presentation. I promise I won't take much of your time. I know that we've spent a lot of time talking about budget, so this is really kind of just wrapping up the budget, budget season. Almost. And so this, this slide here, basically, this is what you're going to, we're going to be sending out our budget information to the public, really kind of just shows the breakdown of where our expenditures are. You'll see the bulk of our money is going to instruction, which it should, where we're a school. The biggest, biggest amount would be employee benefits, and then you see a spattering of the expenses for general support, debt service, transportation, and operations and maintenance. If we can go to the next slide, Dusty, please. Thank you. And this is just a breakdown of where the revenues are coming from. So as I've said before, we're looking to use 944, 606 of our own fund balance and reserves. This is other revenues that I'm expecting for the year, the interest earnings, other prior year refunds and prior year expenses miscellaneous, and I'm still keeping the state aid at this point at the $881,457, hopeful that that's going to be offset, any deductions would be offset by federal funds. We'll see. Haven't heard anything different at this point. And we're looking for a tax levy of $9,503,553. Go to the next slide. Thank you. So this just shows you a more visual of where our money is coming from, mostly from Garrison taxpayers, and then we have 8% from state aid and 8% approximately from our own fund balance. Then the next slide, please. And then this slide is just reminding everybody of what our estimated tax rates would be for the 2021 year. For Phillips Town, it'd be $21.61, and for Putt Valley, $9.91. It's all estimated at this point. We really don't know the true tax rate until August. And it's just always a good thing to show that we've been reasonable here in the last five years in Garrison. The average increase for Phillips Town has been 29 cents. If you take your total increase and divide over five years, and for Putt Valley, it's 11 cents per year. And the next slide, please. Thank you. So what's my tax increase for a home of $700,000? You're looking at a tax increase of about $165 a year for either whether, whether you're in Phillips Town or Putt Valley, with a estimated tax increase of 2.36%, which is under the tax cap. The next slide. And we have a budget vote June 9th by absentee ballot only. All ballots must be received by mail no later than 5:00 PM on June 9th. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions? Yes, Jill?
Sue?
Yeah.
Hi. Isn't our district one of the two lowest in, in the area in terms of taxes?
We, we do, yeah. I mean, the history in the, in the five-county area, so that includes Putnam, Rockland, Westchester, I think Duchess, and-
Orange.
Orange. We do have the second lowest. The only other district that's lower than us would be Mechanical Hills, where we seem to have a little, we're very close. It's not much of a difference, but yes, we, we are, we do have one of the lowest tax rates. And I feel like this budget supports a very strong educational program, regardless of where we're going to be in September or July, whether we're going to be e-learning or back, back working, you know, all in district again. I think we, it supports a very strong educational program with a lot of input from everybody, a lot of support from the board, so.
Good. Any other questions? I'll just remind the public to vote. It is the board, it's also my responsibility to remind the board that we can't advocate for particular ways that people vote, but we can certainly encourage people to vote and articulate the value of the particular, of the budget so as we approve. So just remind everybody about proper rule for that. Okay? Any other comments? No?
I guess the ballots will be going out shortly in the mail. I think tomorrow, right, Dusty? You can, Dusty is shaking her head, yes, tomorrow.
Yes, actually, the brochure, that's actually on our website now, that went out. So please, if you could, as board members, let us know when you retrieve them. They'll give a sense of the timing.
Okay. Right, so about, the flyer will go out, the ballot will go out, and the votes will be tallied, okay? In that order. So people have roughly 12 days to buy the receipt of ballot to vote, correct? Is that about right?
That's correct.
Thank you, Dusty, and thanks to Dusty for, for really working to pull this all off. It's been a crazy budget vote, and we appreciate her patience and everything, and her execution and professionalism. New job, new world, new problems. It's all right. Consent agenda. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda items B through H.
No, moved.
Second? Okay. I'd only make one comment that we have to accept the minutes with an amendment that didn't quite make it onto the agenda. Is that correct, Dusty? Right?
Yes, there'll be a minor correction to the minutes for a vote taken for the appointment of Mr. Albano. I think initially we had six members, and then a seventh joined, so we reestablished that number. So I have to make that correction.
Right.
And I have to add Jill's name.
Yeah, so-
We got it on one, not the other.
Yeah, we just have to make sure the minutes properly reflect the reality and that-
I will amend those.
Thank you so much, Dusty, and I just wanted to point out that we're also welcoming, one of the items C here is that we're appointing Jesse Lunenpak, who is still in the audience, it seems, and to be a community member to the audit committee effective May 28 through June 30th. So I wanted to point that out, okay? Besides the other things that are in the consent agenda. Got a motion, so be resolved. The Board of Education accepts the consent agenda of, consent agenda of items B through I, it seems, with the amendments. So indicated for May 27, 2020. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Raise your hands. Dusty, record the votes, and the ayes seem to have it, correct?
James, I'm sorry. I don't think we had a motion on that.
I think we did.
Who made them? I, I don't have a record- Who made them? I, I don't, I don't have a recording.
Courtney made the motion. I don't think she seconded.
I, yeah, somebody.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Got it.
Question, maybe I'm not reading the agenda, but do not we need to give him the oath of office? Should I put him on the?
I can actually do that with him because I'm also a notary. So I've already spoken to Jesse about that. So we'll take care of that before Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Discussion items, committee updates. Speaking of which, we have an audit committee meeting with Jesse Lunenpak and Courtney McCarthy and others, in which we end our audit team. Deborah, is there anything you want to, Dr. Jackson, if you want to mention here about this?
Committee meeting? No, Sue's here. We will be meeting with our auditors. It's a pre-audit meeting. And I look forward to us putting together with our community members as well. And who's on the audit committee? Can you give, give a reminder? It's Sarah, Courtney.
Courtney and myself, I believe. Yeah. So anything we should, that we'll be attending to, this is a Friday meeting at three o'clock, correct? Just to remind people. Yeah. Up, can't hear you. You gotta click, you have to unmute, so there.
Sorry. The auditors really run that meeting? I mean, they basically go over what they're gonna be auditing. They, they'll ask everybody there, except myself, if there's any concerns or anything that they, they're, the board or any members are, you know, would think that they should be diving into that kind of a thing. So it's not, you know, it's kind of, it's their ballpark, you know, at that point. They, they, they run that meeting.
I just remember getting a lengthy document. There's a lengthy document that they produce, right?
Yes, of all the things they're expecting me to give over the next month, basically.
I got it.
Yes.
Sue, question. When do they typically do, present their audit report findings to the community and the board?
Usually, usually by the end of September, early October. It's, it depends. I mean, last few years, there's been difficulty getting the report done because ERS doesn't have their information on time and, and everybody's waiting for that information. They're kind of throwing it into the report at a last minute, so.
All right, terrific. Planning committee, Jocelyn, do you just, we've got? We have nothing yet?
Yeah, there's, there's no true updates right now, except that we've been in touch with Jonathan Costa, who we approved to work with come officially August one, but things may change. I mean, because things are always changing these days. But he will be in touch with Carl soon and we're looking forward to moving ahead.
Right, so look for planning committee. That's David, myself and Jocelyn. Look forward to some dates coming up in August. Will be, will have to be communicating committee dates. And the whole board should be aware that they will be roped into this process, I'm sure, at some point. Okay. Policy. Sarah, you want to talk about policy? Committee?
I'm gonna start it off. That we have, we've been meeting fairly regularly. We did not meet this week. We'll be meeting again next week. But still, amazingly, we're still kind of on track for our goal of finishing up reviewing the policy by the end of the year. I think
A whole binder?
Yeah, Dr. Jackson says this is not an option. She is gonna see it through, come hell or high water. We are in the midst of the seven thousands, which brings about, which is some exciting topics such as attendance, student progress, student contact, student conduct, student activities, coming up on student welfare, is everything about students. But honestly, we're having some really interesting discussions. Some things go back to teachers for ideas review. Some go to the lawyers. And, but we're, we're making our way through. We've also, we jumped ahead briefly. It is the eight thousands to discuss the Title One Parent and Family Engagement and that we're in discussion with some designated community members and hope to bring it to the full board, but in June. Jocelyn, Sarah, what did I miss?
We
That was a great summary. There will be more, some of the bigger ones.
Here's the draft. This is what we're working on.
It's very exciting work. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. And thank you to Mr. Albano for joining and jumping into these meetings. So we continue this work with you once you officially join us, July one.
That leaves Matt and, well, Jill, is, have you had a facilities meeting recently? Any updates? We just got some, right?
Yeah, we just got some. So no, not, not on top of what, what we heard this evening.
Yeah, so I would recommend that we might, well, there's a possibility, well, there's not a possibility. There's an opportunity for the reopening. Reopening task force for two board members to join. I, I think that's a kind of a pressing need. I want everyone to think about it. It would be good to have a good knowledge of the building proper, wouldn't you say, Dr. Jackson?
I think the team is welcome. You can't have a quorum, but I think we're, we're looking forward to, right, truth is not a quorum. Thank you, James. We're looking forward to just
Not in this one.
It's been a long day. Yes, so yes, I think you've had some volunteers and I think amongst you, you'll pick two people. We'll move them to start working with Carl and the team. As I said, it's a pretty big team and partly what they may opt to do, and it'll be up to Carl, is maybe divvy that work out a little bit. It's, you'll be working with a lot of unknowns and a lot of scenarios. I really do wish we knew more, but it's changing every time we turn around. And so really, the more people thinking about it, I think the stronger our plan will be.
Albany has not signaled a sort of decision day, have they? Like there, that there's a line that they will cross, that there's a date that will be like, okay, at this point, we will have to make a judgment. They have not given anything like that, haven't they?
No, in fact, the governor's been very clear that it's up in the air, that, you know, at this point, there's concerns about the children that have been and having those COVID-like symptoms connected. They really don't know. And so I think that's really the struggle. And as we taught, we meet at our ten thirty meetings and Carl's there, Sue's still on, so I'll say she's there. And the group of us and Melissa, you know, we just keep bringing different conversations to the table. And different states have different plans. Some are outlining it. But New York is a local control. The problem we have is that we will have to connect with what's happening within our region as well. There has to be some connection there. We're too, we're all too interconnected in the families, where we work, how this works out. So again
Well, this is certainly not a district level decision necessarily.
No, there'll be, there'll be, you'll make plans and then you'll need to shift them, much like graduation. And I know you heard Alex talk about that. But, you know, there's a lot of people who are going to weigh in on what we can and can't do with, you know, we're in eighth grade, but in the high schools. You know, it's a real question mark. You know, are you going to be allowed to do what you plan to do in this region? So there are, there are decisions that come down and affect that. Is one.
So finance committee is, finance committee, Sarah? We had our first meeting, correct, since last time? No?
Our first meeting since last night. Well, yes, it's now. Usually how they go. Me and Matt and the finance committee.
And me.
Yeah, you and, thank you, Sue, for the updates on our finances. And I'm sure we'll have a lot of more conversations going forward as things change and we find out where we are with the budget.
So the fine
Sorry, go ahead.
No, it's all right. The finance committee is preparing for any, to have certain meetings over the summer, especially if something comes up that is unfortunate. But either way, we, I think there's a, a need to, to due diligence on the, on the finances and the budget going forward over the course of this next year because of its, the difficult economic circumstances the state finds itself in, if for no other reason, and the state of the economy, which is questionable. Is there anything else on the committee level? I think we're pretty good. Wellness, code of conduct, are those things? Are they, what do we, have we?
There's about four or five things that are, well, I would call major pieces that need a lot of input. Wellness, code of conduct. Title One was on that list, but we needed to do it because we're under a Title One audit. So we moved that forward and I'm gonna have to thank Jess, who, Dan Decker, who was willing to sort of pick that up and help us with that. You also have your special ed plan. That's another one. I'm doing this off the top of my head. There's about four big pieces that need a lot of participation and more than people could give right now. And they need teacher input. And we really wanted to keep the teachers focused on the instructional pieces as well. Those are sort of sitting there waiting to, waiting to work, go forward. And they'll go quickly because the committees have been developed. The plans are there. It's really just a matter of some meeting times and maybe this summer we'll be able to, you'll be able, and I will be there, do those. But those are clearly laid out. We talked about, and I, I'll just say this, and I know the team knows, but the policy committee knows. One thing, the, the organization that's, gives us this model would like is that when we adopt, we adopt the whole book. And I was hoping we could pull these out and put placeholders in and adopt the rest and leave those. They really do want us to adopt even those. So maybe we'll have some discussion that those will be in sort of in a draft form and then we'll pull them and work on them. But we need to work that out. I don't know if I'm making sense.
But yeah.
That's, that's
I think that's it for that item, correct, folks? Yeah. Next up is a board meeting schedule and this is the, I asked Dusty to put the board meeting for 2021 on the schedule so that you have a chance to add or subtract. We can always sort of add and subtract, but it's very important to have a healthy schedule so that everyone else's committee work or work lives can move more fluidly. So the question would be we have two heavy duty meetings in June coming up, but the schedule would start with July eighth, am I correct? I'm not looking at it right now. The, the reorg meeting, in the reorg meeting, all of our reappointed or elected officials will return and start serving their terms. And there will be an election for a president and we have one nomination so far. So one person that's been nominated, I should say, multiple times. So we'll be looking to elect a president and appoint a vice president and a whole bunch of things. That's the reorg meeting. That's a very, fairly long meeting, if I remember correctly, right? The reorg, Sue, you with me on this? Reorg's a long one, right? That leaves us that's right. So then the question becomes what, whether there ought to be a retreat. And I thought Sarah might want to talk about the need for a retreat or whether we should put a date on the calendar or what she might be thinking as a potential presidential candidate?
I think, I've talked to a bunch, a couple of people about this. I'd like to propose doing a longer retreat. I know it's hard because we're probably all gonna be zooming still, but looking at a Saturday, July twenty-fifth with Carl stepping into the position, having him lead us in some sessions around law and some real discussions on some of the areas we've touched on throughout the year. And then having an hour to the end to talk about board goals and district goals, short-term district goals that we might need to look at. Of course, keeping in mind that we have our district priorities set currently in place. So that was my proposal. I've talked to many of you about it individually and I, hopefully, we can move forward with changing that date from a 7:00 PM on a Thursday to a Saturday morning.
Dusty, what's that date? That's Saturday, the twenty-fifth, is that correct? Or twenty-sixth? No? July?
Hang on, I'm just gonna look at a calendar.
Saturday is the twenty-fifth in July.
Yes.
All right. So the question was, so this is a discussion item. Whether you all think it's a good idea, we are gonna have to approve this schedule. It's like something we do. We have to approve the schedule. So the question is, is whether you all think this is a healthy idea to slate this onto the schedule as it's not a regular meeting. It's a retreat.
I vote yes. I think it's, I know not an official vote, but I think it's always good for us to come together outside of these regular board meetings to go in depth with some different topics, especially working with Mr. Albano as our new superintendent. It'll get us started in the new year, as it was, as it were, to, as a jumping off point.
Agree. I think it's especially important this, this year.
I, I agree. And I would hope, oh, sorry, Matt, I saw you go off mute, but I, I would hope, or I hope that there's some new directives at that point that we can, there's some folks can potentially meet, be allowed to meet in person at a safe distance with protective equipment so that it might not all be a Zoom call.
I agree with the idea, absolutely, having a Saturday morning. I don't know, I, I don't know, I'm not convinced yet that Zoom is like an in-person meeting is one thing, but in-person, six feet apart with masks and gloves, I don't know if that's better or worse than on the screen, but we can discuss that. But the idea of a longer retreat on a Saturday, I'm certainly a hundred percent in favor of. Yeah.
Well, I think
I'm in favor of it.
Jill?
I'm in favor of it as well. Also, I had suggested to Sarah that some of us attend a NISBA meeting. It's on July twenty-first and twenty-second from eight thirty in the morning to noon. And it's about the legal ramifications of reopening. We've all been emailed about this. So I think we should take a look at it and some of us should attend.
I wanna jump in on that, too. That's a conference I went to last summer and it was, well, it was in person last summer and obviously not totally about COVID. It was actually really interesting. And maybe something we could look at also if Mr. Albano is willing to attend or would find it interesting as well. Because I know there were a lot of superintendents when I went there. But I thought they had great presenters and a lot of great information.
Okay, so you've heard it. You've heard it. So long retreat is how many hours?
Like three, four. Over two days.
Do over two days? Yeah, I mean, we could, it depends on how many, I think we need to look at the agenda and set with, once Carl takes over, Mr. Albano takes over. And then set an agenda, see what, break it up into hours, make sure we have breaks provided we're zooming so that we're not all staring at each other for four hours.
All right. So then I would only recommend to the board members to clear, clear the slate for July twenty-fifth because it seems like it's going to be an imminent retreat here. Imminent retreat. Let's hope it's imminent, too. Okay, phonetic confusion aside, let's move on. Alrighty. Public comment. There was one comment I saw in the Q and A and it was a question from Kimberly Schoffler. And is there any way to do a soft transition with the earlier grades, having them regroup as a class with the same 2019, 2020 teacher and transition to the next grade within a few weeks? Some of these students may need that handheld transition. So I think what Schoffler is referring to is that we have these kind of promotion, what we used to call, I don't know what they call it here, but we used to call it in Jersey. what we used to call, I don't know what they call it here, but we used to call it in Jersey promotions, right? You get promoted to the next grade and there's some sort of transitional ceremony where you go meet your other teacher and all that. That was the question. I don't know. I think since we don't have any other questions floating around, if, Deborah, if you, did you want to speak to that?
Just simply that that was something we talked about, how to help the teachers sort of hand off the students from one grade to another. Their weighted team, that would be all part of the reentry planning. And that would be more important if we're still online or if we're splitting classes. So that is something that we did a little bit of talking about, but it'd be part of, it would really be the task of the committee to work on. And there's a lot of questions like that. And so that's why I'm thrilled to see we have seven teachers on that committee because they'll help figure out a way to do that. And certainly, even though you're doing that, you also have a new kindergarten class coming in. So you have that as well to, to work with. In some ways, that's why maybe the, the way that grades, grades are teamed up right now, K 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then middle school might help with that. But we certainly can't, it can't be as it's always been. So Mr. Schoffler is absolutely right. It cannot be, this is simple. Now there's your new teacher. So all of that would have to take place, again, depending on if we're full-time in the school, part-time in the school, full-time at home. There's discussions on will all the teachers be here and all the students be home? The conversations are in a lot of places, but that is key. And I would put it under the social emotional aspects. That's clearly what this is. And we're going to spend a lot, spend a lot of time on how to best do that in a way that students feel safe and welcomed and we build those relationships. So.
I think a lot of the students may know their next teacher because of sibling relationships or whatnot, but it's always good for maybe the, you know, the fourth grade teacher to drop into the third grade to, you know, spend some time as much as possible. It's not, you know, our role to determine, but those kinds of strategies often are very helpful. Okay. Anything else from the public? I don't see anything, anything else.
I'll just check while you're waiting. I had a slightly, and I'm not sure if I misunderstood, I have a slightly different interpretation of Ms. Schoffler's question, which was that, or sort of along the same lines, but if we were to, my guess, what I had, the way I read it was if we were to go back to school in September as normal, saying that all the kids entering would, a few weeks with the teachers that they have had this current school year almost as, and then have a moving up, have a reintegration, rather than, I think what you meant, James, was more about the next year's teachers coming down to talk to the class right now. I don't, it's not up to us right now anyway. It was just a different way of looking at that question. And I think it's, it's certainly important to, you know, and I look forward to hearing with the task force all the different options that they explore, but that's definitely something.
I was hoping to have read that question, you know, faithfully. And I think the, I think you're right, Courtney, was it's, it's, because it's, you know, I, I think, I didn't know what the, whether the intention was for this. I think anything like that, that goes toward building the social emotional relationships and supports for our students is really important, whether it happened, maybe both can happen, who knows, right? It's, it's not, it's up to the, everyone to look out for the kids, of course. So, but yeah, that's, thank you for pointing that out. Anybody else? Board comment? No board comment?
Um, I just, oh, sorry, Sarah. No. I just wanted to encourage people to vote because voting is an important civic act we can all make. And I guess this is more of a, of a question that I can hope, maybe field offline, but I'm not quite sure why board members can't advocate for a position on where they vote. At the new member, I'm just kind of unclear why we can't suggest voting to approve, not approve, et cetera. But I just then will leave it as please vote by mail, that Dusty and others have worked really hard on over the past several days.
Sure. I, I think it's a nice self-education moment. Deborah, do you want to, do you want to field that one? What we can say and what we can't say and why?
You can, there's a lot of legal reasons for that. You can encourage people to vote, just as Jocelyn did, and we want them to exercise their rights. But we do have to be very careful as trustees of the school district and as leaders of the school district not to influence that vote in any way. We also need to be very careful to make sure we're broad-based, that we don't just speak to parents or just to a certain group. So it's really about us getting the information, making sure it's accurate in the hands of everyone, encouraging them to read, to learn, ask questions and to vote. There's, there has been litigation on that and there's even our brochures, as you will see, it says to vote. We're very careful about that. And all this has been since, well, I don't need to give you a history lesson. We're, at some point offline, I can give you why we're there, but yes.
Any questions, Sarah?
Not a question. I just wanted to thank Mr. Albano for jumping in and becoming involved in all of the meetings from the committee meetings to the COVID team, to the building project and the construction project. It's really been an asset to this transition to have him so involved at this stage. And thank you, Dr. Jackson, for welcoming him into these processes. I think it will be a very smooth transition. And I appreciate the effort on both your parts. Thank you.
I think it couldn't be going better, quite frankly.
He was at our superintendent's meeting the other day, following the design meeting. He was this morning at our, our check-in. We're having conversations and, and sometimes it's the little things and Carl clearly recognizes that, that'll help him transition. So he's, he's been terrific.
Yes, Jill?
I wanted to congratulate one more of our graduates. And I think it's especially important because we just talked about Bosse's programs. There's a student who has become a certified arborist. So when we're congratulating people on going to college, I also want to congratulate people who are entering into a trade.
Yeah, I think I mentioned him, the arborist, right? We had someone who graduated, yeah, who received a certificate. But I think it's really important to underscore. So thank you for that. Questions or comments? Well, any other comments? Yeah? Are we good? Okay, then. Last but not least, is this thing here. Hold on. Got to take it up. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second it. I'll take that as a second, David. All right. All in favor, raise your hand to say aye to adjourn. It looks like the ayes have it. Thank you all for your time. And I know this was a longish meeting, but an important one. But our relationship with Bosse's and our relation, you know, is a significant one, both monetarily, time, services. It does shape and determine a lot of what our students get and what our staff receives as far as training goes. So it's very important to understand how to value and how to monitor what, how we're accessing so that we can do it the smartest way possible and the most strategic way possible. And I keep going back to that word. So I wanted to thank everybody for presenting, Jim Ryan and, and company for presenting. And wanted to thank Garrett for running, presenting as well. Okay, everyone say goodbye, except for Courtney. I just have one moment with you, two seconds with you. That'd be great. Thanks.